So we'll open up, this is the Tana Caver Plating Board Meeting of October 16th, 2012. And it's a little after seven, about seventy past seven, meeting room four. We go on to, if we could all stand in front of you, you should see the flag. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now we'll go on to new business. The first thing is Rocky Meadow Development received a plan form B.
Well, I can tell you, Mr. Chair, we did not receive that. I put it on the agenda and anticipation, you can pass on that.
Okay. The second item in the new business is Borrego Solar System Minor Modification, formerly the Rocky Meadow Development.
In your packet, I put the application, I put an introductory letter from Prime Engineering, and I also put the decision on this property that was decided on on December 15th.
That's a good idea.
For the record, my name is Richard Ray Oates with Prime Engineering with the plans, and also Jared Connell, who is from Borrego, the company that proposes to install the panels and operate this facility. As you recall, you approved the array and listed a whole series of conditions, compliance with the fire chief's letter, compliance with Hudson O'Neil's requirements, and a whole series of your own conditions. And this set of plans which you received you complies with both. You basically revised it, showed it to the deputy fire chief, and you concluded that this meets his satisfaction. He wanted slightly wider turnarounds on the road so that his fire would come in easily turn around, and he wanted the road slightly wider, so we've provided that. On the conditions, the plan we had, we wanted the panels to be a minimum of 50 feet away from the residences, we actually pulled it to 60 feet back. We wanted them to be at least 100 feet from the actual structures, and we had it 120 feet. So we're clearly meaning that. You also wanted the screening fence to screen these residents, so we run it all the way over to here. So this is all now eight-foot-high screening fence. And so, and we've also shrunk the panels down slightly, and what we gave you is a exhibit where the orange is the extent of what you approved, and the blue is what we're currently proposing. So you can see that the panels are further away from the residents, further away from the residents, and further away from these residents. There were fewer of the panels, and the roadway system that was, again, running right at the 65-foot off the Wetlands line has been shifted slightly away from the Wetlands, and we provided turnaround. So it's slightly smaller, slightly smaller generating facility, but also slightly smaller footprint. And so we're, here is even, hopefully, with your ability to concur that this meets your conditions, so we can go on the process of developing all of the building permit plans and going to the actual building permit.
I know that we talked about screening the lower part of the field there, which you just said that you're going to screen that. Now, we also talked about screening along Great Meadow, and that's on that plan too? We do screen that?
Right, it's an eight-foot-high solid vinyl fence, and in front of that is a replanting of evergreen trees, the screening fence.
So you're coming before us, and you want us to see if we would have this as a minor modification?
Right, the first decision you make is, is this a minor modification, or are you going to require a full site plan review? That's your first decision. And then, if it's a minor modification, then you vote if they do this. If it's not, then we have to schedule a public hearing.
Well, there are no drainage issues here, so, and you have shrunk in the field, and yeah, and there is screening where we wanted it. I would think that this could be a minor modification, but I don't know how anybody else feels about this.
Mr. Chair, when you, upon the discussion of either a minor modification or special permit, I see that we're reducing the actual impacts to the neighborhood. The site's actually getting smaller, the amount of solar cells are actually going smaller, so I don't see where it would have to be a full site plan review myself. I see it as a minor modification, because we're actually reducing the impacts to the neighborhood, so that's my opinion.
Well, I wasn't here. Yeah, you just, of course, for any of the hearings for the others, so I'm not going to have an opinion on whether it's a minor modification or not, but I heard none of the original testimony, unfortunately.
I'm going to have to call one that I wasn't here for any.
That was before your time.
For my time.
Do you, Mr. Chairman?
Chairman?
Does it require a vote? Yes. Vote A to determine which way you're going, and then a vote for either a decision on the minor modification, or a vote to schedule a public hearing.
Again, through you. After the vote, then there will be plenty of time for the board to ask questions about the building plan.
If it's a minor modification, if it's not, then you have to schedule the hearing.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to require a minor modification for the application, if that's a purpose.
They have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Those abstaining?
Aye.
So we have three, four, and two abstentions.
So now you have a minor modification?
Minor modification, so.
I have a couple of questions, if you mind, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Will.
Mine out of the way. The, maybe you don't know the question off the top of your head, I'm going to ask Jack. Do we know the total number of panels that was approved at the original modification? I mean, the original site, the original approved plan?
I will call the number of.
You know, how many panels you're actually installing?
I do, Jared Connell from Borrego Solar.
If you could come up, so it's mostly for the people at home?
4,160 modules, I think.
How many is that, 4,000?
4,160.
Now, that was previous.
I don't know the various count off the top of my head, I could email that to Jack tomorrow.
Then, in the eight-foot shielded vinyl fence, I see we have some type of a spec here on the side, on the eight-foot fence, is that a, that's not a lab, that's just an actual plastic PVC fence?
Yes.
I assume that we should have some type of maintenance plan for that?
There's not much maintenance to do.
Well, in case they're busted, they're broken, and stuff like that.
Repairing.
We have one repair schedule, so that way it's maintained throughout the duration of that, myself, I, you know, when things get broken, and the neighbors will be seeing through it.
We provided you with a, with a schedule, and it's telling you when we're going in to inspect the trees, it's required we come in and inspect the trees, whether it's indoor leases and when the grass is removed, so that.
Mr. Hunter, on that eight-foot fence, do they have to get a special permit for that from the town?
No, but you wouldn't need a building permit, because there's more than six people.
Thank you, I don't have that, no.
Did you provide that today?
That's in the October 14th.
I missed that one, sorry. I only had the cover letter.
Don't do that, don't do that.
I didn't see that myself. I don't know what you submitted there. Was that submitted by email?
I think that's already submitted.
I sent it to you by email. Well, either way, someplace in here, we're going to have a maintenance, you know, the actual fence.
I want to read that real quick. I have a couple other questions, Mr. Chair. Any evergreens that's going to be planted, can you point out where those are going?
It's this entire structure here, we're preserving existing vegetation, but then we're implanting the evergreens to the satisfaction of the plant.
How far apart are you planting? In the, I know ones I proposed to plant.
Six-foot trees, six to eight foot, and planted among the existing trees, and the number is depending on the density of the vegetation that's standing out. You know, we're not going to cut a tree so we can plant a small tree. So we're implanting in here and along the stretch, and it's basically to the point where you, it's adequately screened, you can plant. If you went out there and said, I want more trees, then we're going to plant more trees. With performance.
So Jack, we need something written in the decision that prior to a building permit or something like that, the screening was approved by the board or by its representative or whatever.
It's not, it's not prior to building permit, the building permit is when you, once you put that, is when we go out there.
I think there's, I'll, you know what it says. Yeah, there's a condition in the existing permit that the trigger is by the time the array is operational, that all maintenance, I mean, all landscaping has to be approved by the plant.
That's conditional, 15.
So we'll just make sure that this is included on condition 15.
No good right now, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any questions? Actually, I want to clarify, on sheet three, you do say that you're going to put leland cypresses every six to eight feet on center, so I want to make sure that they are six to eight feet on center, not as somebody else decides it needed. A minimum of six to eight feet on center. You also say that they're six feet high, being in the business that, I want to make sure they're six to eight feet high. You just stated you put them six to eight feet high, but the note actually says six feet high. Six feet high to the tip of a leland cypress means the tree is about four feet, four feet high in its density, so it's not a very dense tree. I want to make sure that it's six to eight feet high, if that's what you just said. You read that?
I do, yeah.
Okay, good.
And could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that one, so I can put this down?
That the trees will be a minimum of six to eight feet high at the time of planting, and that they'll be placed a minimum of six to eight feet apart, in accordance with the note, which says amongst existing trees, it's necessary to provide an effective screening view, the screening.
Pursuant to the note on.
Pursuant to the note on sheet three. But I'd also like to offer a condition that we kind of focus where they're going to be most effective. In other words, when I look at these abutters, if the area between the abutters where there's the least amount of clearing on their property is where they're going to put them, and then where the abutters have cleared openings here, I want to make sure the trees go where it's going to be most effective for the abutters, and I certainly would be willing to go out there to help, to help spot the trees, if that helps. I've done it before, and.
You've done it before for a lot of projects.
To make sure that they're the most effective for the abutters, that's what we're trying to do, is to make sure that they're screening. And I don't want to leave it up to a landscape contractor to make the decision.
The panels in here are seven-foot high, the fence, screening fence, solid fence is eight-foot high.
I understand.
So we're implanting here to screen the fence.
I understand.
So it's just, they're looking at a.
At a white vinyl fence, which may not, may not to some people be attractive, but I just want to make sure that these are done correctly, so, and that's a condition we dealt with for track to supply, if you remember?
Yeah.
Between the two boards, I went out and spotted the trees for the abut to make sure that they were most effective for whatever it is they're trying to screen, whether it's the panels or the fence. And I need to know, I didn't read everything, and I wasn't here for the other hearings, but how do you plan on watering most trees? They're going to need water, a leland cypress is going to need water.
Watering in the first year to get them.
Watering in general, you know, in the second, at the end of the first year, if nobody waters them and they start dying, I don't think it's a very good thing, so.
We're doing an irrigation water until they've taken root.
Okay. Jack, was there a condition for the warranty?
Yes, one year.
I'd like to extend it to two years. And I do that because, because I think you need to maintain them for two years, because a tree, an evergreen tree like that, depending on when it's planted, might survive the first year, and now the warranty's over, and the second year is when it has trouble living. So I don't think it's an unfair thing to extend it to two years. Many communities, right in our local county, require two-year performance on the plant material by a developer, so I think it's a fair, a fair condition to put on it, is that you make sure that for two years, that they're going to live, and during that two year time, we will inspect, and if there's been any significant dieback, they'll be replaced. You agree with that?
That's perfectly agreeable. We contend even at the year five, if some of the trees dies, that they be replaced, plus the decision survives beyond the two-year period. It's a condition that it be screened. Same thing goes on the other side when you're screening. If we get die-off, we're going to have to.
That was in the original agreement.
But we're going one year.
I think two years is crucial. That's it for now, thank you.
On the western side, I had opened up the plan, I just don't want to drape it over those who are used to it, but where, I know there was some natural screening there, and.
When we, when we did the site walk with the plant board, there were specific areas where it seemed to be a little thin, and so it was agreed that they'd be implanting there enough to screen the panels. So, so there was a particular area, it's really this area here, that it was, it was a thin, not that broad an area, it was thin.
Okay, so once this solar field is in place, we'll inspect the whole permit of the area and determine if anything additional needs to be done. Okay, okay.
I just have a question to ask, Jim. I thought the original plan called for five years for the tree?
No, I don't think so.
Am I getting confused or something? I thought it was five years if they would maintain the trees.
Well, they still have to be maintained for as long as solar array is there.
Yeah, I thought they said if there was any, if anything died off, that they would replace them.
I would think they'd have to be.
I don't know how long this maintenance agreement is for, Jack, you want to tell us? Is it for as long as the solar field is in operation?
Haven't seen this before.
Okay, well, what it says is, is that the, inspect the trees annually, replace as necessary, so it's for the life of the, by frankly, it's for the life.
I thought that I read it, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I'm good. Well, anything additional?
I'm all set.
We've already, so that's, that's it then, we've accepted this as a minor modification, and.
Can we have the motion to go on?
I have four additional or new conditions, but you're going to add a vinyl fencing to the standard maintenance procedure. And previous condition five will also be addressed for the eastern landscaping. Trees will be a minimum of six to eight feet at planting, six to eight feet apart, pursuant to the note on sheet number three, and placed where appropriate, and a two-year warranty on all landscaping, superseding any other conditions. The panels are not to exceed 4,160 panels. We need to change the step outs. Oh, that's, it was asked in case. Did you say it was 120 feet from the structure?
120 feet from the structure is 60 feet from the property owner.
None of this, the existing conditions, so 100, I think you guys know this rate.
Right, the findings made a condition of 100 feet, and we've increased it voluntarily to 100.
So I want to add that, add it to prior, this is condition one.
There was another item, what are the conditions you wanted financials for sure for the decommissioning of the panels? And so we gave you a letter saying that everything is obviously recyclable, but is the wayward to take it off and to bring it to the seed facilities. So we've given you an estimate of what that cost is, and then given you.
It was emailed to, do you have that paper, do you?
Then it was, then it was, we did a future worth, future value, because it's a 10-year lease, so we gave, the estimate was roughly $15,000. Comes to $15,300, and then the two-and-a-half percent inflation rate for 10 years brings the total to $2,600. And Borrego intends to do that by actually posting a bond with the.
Well, if I may, if I may, I'd like to make a recommendation for cash.
Well, that's all we take anyways. Well, if I may, first off, it's a discretion, statute, state statutes of discretion of treasurer, and our treasurer takes cash, but.
I'd like to make that one.
Yeah. Also, that you will need to have your engineer look at that report, and make a counter, or make some comments on it to see if that number's legitimate, and then you have to worry about inflation and other things to be added, so we'll work on that if they vote Well, it's, okay, so we're going to have another commission. Recommending cash. Yep, and decommissioning plan. Well, it's been negotiated between our engineer and yours.
So we'll return to your next meeting, and hopefully that is all.
I think, and then they'll set the number, and then that number's given to the treasurer to view, to, you know, how he wants, and since I've been here, it's cash, but the prior treasurer wasn't that way, so.
Mr. Chairman, through. Go ahead. These numbers, what, what, what document were they generated from? Mass highway standards, local labor, I mean, how do you get $28 an hour for labor? I'm just asking. $28 an hour for labor, $72 an hour for trucking.
Those were just estimates of what the current trucking costs.
But we need to know somewhere down the line if this is going to be enough to take it down, correct?
Yeah.
Is what we're going to have Sean?
Do you wish you that second? There is, there is a contract that Borrego has with a plant owner, they demanded, they were required to take it down, so this is just in case, some happenstance, but it is a requirement of this lease that it be removed.
Okay, so we're going to send this, and it's money in the account, to have this reviewed by Hudson O'Neil?
We have plenty of power, right? Don't know, I think we're almost.
Because this really needs to be reviewed, to make sure that there's enough money to cover the cost. Whether there's a requirement or not, at least is appropriate, but we just don't want to get stuck with a $30,000, $40,000, $19,000.
Yeah, there is a requirement. In your, in your conditions, you conditioned that surety be provided, so we do have to provide surety, but the question is, what is the amount of surety?
Right, and what they're saying, which is that, I believe the RNI account is just about zero, maybe a couple bucks above, but not enough for that, and we'll have to get an estimate from Sean on how much it's going to cost him, probably not much.
It's not going to be much money.
And then get that to Carol.
Do you want to get these costs? You're going to be, what for? You can do it, you have a motion. Do you want to close the evening tonight, or do you want to?
This is not a him.
Well, yeah, that's right, it's just a receipt of plans.
No.
We made a minor modification.
We didn't take a vote on the minor modification, but I didn't know, Mr. Chair, if you wanted to pass them on. We don't have to ask the pilot, because we have a pretty good site spread, I didn't know if you wanted to entertain that. It's totally God's decision, Mr. Chair.
Well, this is something that's, that's already been approved. It's smaller. If somebody had something to say, I could open it up to the public, if you could do it quickly, because we have other things to go on.
I have a question. I'm Chris McCarthy, I live 71 Thurgis Street, that's my property there down the bottom right. Mr. Hunter told us previously that this whole transaction was dead because there was no possible financing, because the town had pulled tax breaks, so I'm wondering what changed?
I can't answer that. What I said was, I've never seen a project in all my research on solar that did, that moved forward without a tax break. And this is not getting any tax breaks, and I'm as surprised as you are. First one I ever heard.
So this gentleman is a businessman, he's going to go ahead with this project, he knows he's going to lose money on?
I didn't, I have no doubt he's going to lose money. I don't know how he's doing it, he's not sure of that, with me.
I have a question. I'm Chris McGrathie from 11 Captain Hall. I'd like to know what they're going to do for security for this, because we all saw what happened to the smaller array on Route 44 with the thieves. So is this thing going to be lit up like downtown Boston in our backyards? Because we're not, we're not happy with this coming here, so if you think any of the neighbors are going to call the police when somebody's back there stealing these panels, you're wrong. We're going to sit there and tell you, I told you so.
Well, we did go through some sort of process when we approved this, but.
Just like Route 44, though, and they've had problems, so they've had to light that up? And beef up security. Are we going to have police run into the neighborhoods now to protect their business back there?
We don't propose lighting. If a street becomes a problem, it might be motion-activated lighting with cameras, security cameras, but it will not be typically lighted.
If I may ask a follow-up on that, Eric.
We need your name, please, for the people at home.
Eric Kavalski, 311 West. If I recall correctly, the previous amendment had a lot of possible security measures on there, possible lighting, possible hog wire. What's the plan in regards to that type of stuff now? What's the plan in regards to that type of stuff now?
It's only going to be added if security became, becomes a concern. And as I said, the security cameras need lighting, so on motion, it would be light. But it's an eight-foot-high locked fence, so we don't need to speak of a problem.
Chris McGurthy from 11 Captain Hall. Route 44 is right on the highway there, same fencing. Bigger issues of theft. You don't think there's going to be a problem with theft, theft there?
No, no.
Can you go on about what there's going to be?
James O'Brien for Great Meadow Drive. Just for, for running a land for the board. This has already been approved, so, I mean, the point of discussion is fairly moot, but I think as a member of the solar bylaw committee and someone who's been very active in this from the beginning, we've come very close to getting to a point that seems very agreeable by everybody. And any project that I've discussed with anybody in this building agrees that this is not acceptable. And you approved it under what you could consider legal duress, you felt like you had to, whatever you may consider. You're moving into a neighborhood where absolutely nobody supports what you're doing, nobody. And you're making a decision to affect people's lives forever because these are their homes. I'm one of them. And you're going to change our lives and our home for something that nobody agrees to. When we have an agreement that is close to death, but more of a buffer and more reasonable from what everybody on the community agrees with, and everybody thinks is a fairly good solution so far, and it's close to going to town meeting, which is being decided right now. So whether this can change for us or not, I understand that you're not making a wise business decision, and I still disapprove of the decision that you made as a vote previously. This does not fit, and everybody knows it, and everybody who supported it has said that this was a bad project when it was wiped out in the beginning. Now you're saying there's nothing you can do about it.
It's an approved project.
The courts are made because when laws are unfair, we can object to them.
All right.
I see that obviously since the last time we saw these plans, there's been more screening out on the south end, plus more trees and fencing. On the west side of the project, north of where the dike is right now, where they've been continuing with their purple woolen pond, there's been some trees that have come down, thinning up, it's dying off. Is there going to be anything additional over there?
We'll take a look at it. Once, once it's in place and once the panels are in, we'll walk the perimeter. Well, we worked for the screening, and we'll take a look at that. We'll take a look at that. That's what I asked during the meeting. Can I ask a question about the permit? That was granted last November, so it expires in November. Is that accurate? Are you extending it at this point?
The Permit Extinction Act that the state passed extends all permits for four years.
Yes and no. The permit was given in December... Oh, that's the date of the... And the permit, under normal circumstances, would have been good for one year. And a building permit isn't going to apply for it because it hasn't. But the legislature back, I think in August, passed a law that automatically extended all permits in Massachusetts, all permits, dog licenses, you name it, every permit for four years, automatic. All right. I don't think there's anything new to say. We'll go on. I'll make a motion to approve the minor modification of the, for Berankle Solar Systems. Would be conditions that we have outlined. Vinyl fencing will be added to the maintenance procedures. The eastern landscaping will be added to condition five of the previous decision. The trees will be 68 feet in height at planting and 6 to 8 feet apart pursuant to the note on sheet three and placed where appropriate and determined, to be determined by the planning board. And there'll be a two-year warranty on all landscapers superseding any other conditions. The project will be limited to 4,160 panels. Previous condition one D will be amended to 120 feet for buffering. The board recommends a cash surety to the treasurer, and this, the final number will be negotiated between the town and the applicant. And all, I think it's already in here, but I'll make it redundant, all RNI funds will be replenished to cover any additional costs.
Do you want to check, Rich?
Yep.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining?
Aye.
I got three, four, six stations. Rich, can I have hard copies of whatever you got there for the record? Have what? Hard copies of whatever you got there for the record?
Yes.
I only need one piece, just for the beginning. They're all very different. He had already said that to Sean.
Yes, we sent it to Sean. And is this...
I got this. Okay. That's what I need. All right, we'll go on to old business. We have a 7:15 public hearing for special permit form B Rocky Meadow Conservation Subdivision. Well, it's the same property in the senior package that they would want to withdraw the special permit preliminary subdivision without prejudice.
We need a motion.
Yes, you do.
Make a motion to accept and withdraw for Rocky Meadow.
Second.
Without prejudice.
We have a motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll go. It's being after 7:15. We'll have a public hearing, special permit, Stephanie Billings, Hobby Kennel. After the last hearing and since the site visit, I put in your packet, the bylaw that regulates panels, I know that one of you wanted that. I know you've gotten a host of emails that I forwarded to you from the, on the butter and from the applicant and from a couple real estate agents. I put those in and some testimony regarding property values and that kind of stuff. And I know, I know your animal control officers are here as well. So I don't know where you want to go with this, but you did have the site visit. You got some testimony. I know you did ask about property values and stuff like that. Does anybody on the board have any additional questions?
I'll start right now. I'd like to hear what other input you have.
You'd like to hear what?
Other input.
Other input from the applicant?
From the board.
From the board? Mr. Chairman, I went out to the site visit with everybody else and got a good look at the whole situation, and the abuders were there, as were the applicants. And my feeling was that the applicant has responded right now as, in a good way, to all of the issues raised by the abuders. I think the, the one issue that is going to be difficult to determine without seeing it in operation is the noise level. I know there was a lot of documents submitted. We read the emails. I personally didn't think they were appropriate documents to be getting, but people are thinking in Sacramento, California. We don't have any idea what that neighborhood is like, the size of the lots, how close the houses are. So I really don't think what goes on in Sacramento, California is appropriate to cover at all. I think that the applicant has tried to address all the concerns. I personally don't think odor is going to be a concern. I don't think sanitation is going to be a concern. I think the licensing issue is easily resolved through the town clerk, or whatever town, and the health department and the dog officer. And I think that the real issue becomes noise. Is this going to be noisy? And I think there's a smaller issue with regard to an animal escaping. That's an issue that anybody who has a dog that they keep penned up has to deal with and any neighbor has to deal with. So right now, I feel pretty satisfied that the issues raised have been addressed, and after I hear from other people, I'd have a recommendation going forward about if we decide to issue a permit.
Rosemarie?
Well, I'd like to maybe highlight on some of the issues and highlight on some of the resolutions, just to clarify it in my thought process.
Yeah, I have to agree with that. My biggest concern is the noise factor, and I'm a dog lover. But I've had issues with neighbors with dogs that refuse to take them in, and I find it hard that you can guarantee that the dogs aren't going to be barking and not causing a nuisance. My office is behind the Plymouth Vet's office, and we hear those dogs constantly, especially when they're out sunup to sundown. We're there at 5:00 in the morning every day. That is my biggest concern.
Is there anything that anybody in the public would like to say? Would you like to say anything?
I'd like to see the applicant, how she's going to do about the noise that she's come up to.
Yeah, I think my biggest concern is the noise. I know that you've been 18 years in the business. You're a professional doing this. Your home looks like it's professionally landscaped. It's going to have a nice fence around it. I don't think small and odor are a, are going to be a problem, but I would be concerned about the dogs and the barking. And it's kind of, it's, it's a tough decision to make. I mean, can you, how, do you, what kind of a problem is the barking?
Stephanie, would you come up to identify yourself and...
Stephanie Billings, 60, 70 years. I'm assuming you're talking about the Plymouth Animal Hospital, which has at any given time 100 dogs on the property. So I could totally understand the barking.
I've got dogs.
It's a lot, there's a lot of dogs. They don't have enough staff. The, I'm only going to have 10 dogs, so keeping 10 dogs quiet is just as easy as keeping, you know, my dogs at home quiet. So I basically playing, you know, because I'm going to be with them. You know, we'll either play in the yard, we'll be inside playing, we'll be doing stuff and just keeping them entertained, really. I mean, I was trying to think of like devising a plan as to if I, at one point, I'm not going to have 10 dogs every day to start, so I wanted to do like an agenda. So, you know, from eight to 10, maybe I could take two dogs for a walk, have the other, like if I have two more dogs, three more dogs, have them hang out in a kennel in the house. And then take those dogs for a walk around the block, come back, get the other, the other two, take those for a walk around the block, get the other one, take those for a walk. All dogs will be confined in a kennel in the house. They won't be outside when I'm walking on the block. The only dogs that will be out will be the ones that I'm with. That could keep the, the noise down, just keeping them busy and...
I do have a question. What's the biggest sized dog you're going to take in? Because I know I've owned 245-pound mastiff, and I can't, if he wants to go after something, hang on to him. You're a lot smaller than me. You're walking...
Oh, will he walk around the block?
Well, I have, right now I have shepherds, and I, I generally don't want anything bigger than a shepherd, just because the area's not going to be that, it's not going to be big enough for, for head mastiff.
But if you're saying you're going to take, no, you're not going to say you're going to take two dogs for a dog. You're taking a mastiff in a pool for a walk. You're going to get dragged.
Well, I would do big and little like that anyways. It's just a safety.
I'm just saying.
But no, that, I don't want to have, I don't want to have anybody over 100. One of my shepherds is 100 pounds, so I'll just say that, but he's a little chubby. But I don't want anybody smaller than, say, a sheltie either. I don't want any little toy breeds. I don't want any ones that...
A yibby.
Yeah, well, yeah, because they do. They just feel like, when they want to play, they... So it's basically the dogs that I have lined up right now are a golden retriever who I know doesn't bark, and a sherpa who is a Siberian husky that I already take care of, my dog Drake, and I have a sheltie Kona that I'll be taking as well. So I already have four that I want to come, and one of them's mine. So, and I know for a fact that they're all really good dogs. So it's also, it's also in the evaluation process where obviously if I have a dog, like I can run up the bat, this is the ideal hospital, and they ask me, Davis, if you want to play ball, he's going to bark and jump and bark and jump and bark and jump and drive me nuts until you throw that ball. Obviously, I wouldn't want those kind of dogs because it's in, it's at my house. I don't want to get a headache, and I don't want to bother the neighbors. I don't want to bother anybody. And I don't want dogs who are just going to freak out and bark whenever. You know, I want them all just to be kind of chill and just...
That's a good weight on the smog.
I would say 35 to 40 pounds, yeah.
So you're saying that while you're taking some of these dogs for a walk, the other dogs are going to be left unattended, but they're going to be inside your house?
In a crate. In a crate. They'll be in like a dog crate being, you know, where my, my shepherd is right now. So they'll be in it, and it's locked. They can't get out. And, but that's only if I'm allowed to do that. I have to ask the dog people if they're not allowed to walk around because I do with my dogs now, but if I want to be taking other people's dogs, I want to make sure something first.
So they'll be in the basement, though. I mean, so if, the thing I was thinking, well, if you're going to be home and you're going to be with those dogs for the time that they're there, you can make sure that about the noise. But if you're going to be walking some of the dogs, then you're not going to be there while some of the dogs are there, they're going to be left unattended.
I would, I would make sure, I would definitely make sure that they were not amped up before I last, if dogs are, they're different. Like some, if when they get there, we're going to be, it's going to be later in the day, it's not going to be right away. So they'll be already a little tired, they probably want to take a nap anyway, so they'll either take a nap. But if I, if I was to like walk down the hill and go on the block and I hear them barking, I would come back. You know, I don't want, like I said, I don't want to bother anybody, I don't want to make anybody mad. Also, I mean, I wouldn't, I, like I said, I don't want, I don't want to bring in 10 dogs who are barkers, you know, because you can't, you can't have 10 dogs that are going to bark their heads off, and you can have 10 dogs who don't. You know, my shepherd only barks if he's in his, if he's outside behind a fence, if this dog guy, and he barks to let me know that there's somebody coming towards property. You know, that's his job. But, I mean, that's only if I'm allowed to walk. But if they're, if, like I said, at any point that they're barking. But I could also put like a radio on. There's lots of ways. Like the day that you guys were at my house, I had four dogs in the house and not one of them barking, y'all, you guys were in my yard, and they could, it's just, just have them, and they're, they're big, and they bark in the morning, so...
But they're your dogs, too. They're not somebody else's dogs.
True, but they are very protective of me, so if they hear different voices, their first instinct is to bark, and all I do is I turn the radio on. And that's just, because dogs can hear somewhat better than we can, but with the radio being in the same room that they are, they couldn't hear you guys outside. So there's lots of different, like little tricks that you can keep them quiet. And a radio is one of them. Or having a D9 opener.
When we were out there for the site visit, you discussed putting up a dockade fence on the property, right?
Feasibly, financially, I don't know if I'll, if I don't have to do it, I don't want to have to do that. I would rather just be able to do what we're going to do with the screening around the fence so they can't see the neighbors. And if I have a radio on down in the basement, or if I have a radio going on outside, that brings the whole barking, if they hear the kids playing next door, if they hear the kids doing stuff in the pool or whatnot, they hear them, whatever. If the radio's on the yard, it's going to drown out whatever's going on over there, or they're just assuming it's a radio or the TV, and they won't think of it as a new noise, and they won't bark at it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, go on.
Through you. We had talked a little bit about at our last meeting, some type of licensing and notification plan. Did you come up with something like that?
Well, we had discussed to make sure that the dogs that I was bringing in to be licensed. And so the computer program that I have, I haven't bought it yet, but the computer program that I want to buy has a spot where you can put the tag number, and I can actually put the town right next to it. So then I would be able to email anything to anybody right from that site.
I think that we should have, and I look, I mean, through you, Mr. Chairman, to our control officers. I'd be looking for them to file with you guys... control officers, I'd be looking for them to file with you guys, the dogs that are there, their active licenses. I'm going to make that as some type of condition if this goes forward. Also, I'd be looking forward to some type of either monthly or quarterly, I was thinking more quarterly inspection done by the animal control officer. And those on your inspections, you'd get it back to us, so that way we can even keep an ongoing file of it. I'm looking for something like that. Do you have any problems with inspections done by the animal control officer?
You all can come inspect it.
I'm going to put this out for discussion with you guys. I'm looking at, I know that you, you're going to be receiving dogs prior to seven o'clock in the morning. You had made that statement at the site visit. There might, there might be one or two that come in before seven o'clock in the morning. Outside activities, though, bringing them outside. I, I'm going to ask that we've, we've put in a condition that no dogs outside before eight in the morning for playtime and activity or something like that. I just want to give a little bit more buffer to like if anybody is going to work or what have you. There's a little bit more leniency. Not all of us go to work at four in the morning.
And that's what it's meant to do Friday, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I'm looking, I think that, that's not a reasonable, but I'm, I'm tapped whatever you guys think that's right. I just think that it gives a little bit more time. I think those are the one of the big things that were concerning me. Whenever the chance comes.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Yeah, sure. I had a question.
Eric, Chris?
Sure. Eric Steele, 22 Copperland Lane here in Carver. So, I had actually a few questions. I was wondering if the board has looked at, because I know this is a first for Carver, so a first kennel.
Could you come up just so that way we make sure that they can inherit it all, please?
So, I know that this is a first for Carver for a kennel in Carver. And then I think a doggy daycare.
Doggy daycare.
Okay, so a doggy daycare.
This is just during the day.
So, just a doggy daycare.
Five days a week.
So, the first for Carver for a doggy daycare. And then I think to put it at another level, the first in a residential area. So, you would think a doggy daycare could be a, a business. It's an entity. You're making money on it. So, I noticed in the bylaws that there's a lot of language and around, I guess, sheep, if you have sheep or animals, is how they would classify that. And there's lots of regulations around that. It says if you have a kennel, it's got to be a hundred feet from, in a butter. So, there's a lot of language around that. And I was just curious to know if you've looked at a lot of that language and compared any of that to a, a dog kennel that would house ten dogs.
Can I ask a question, Eric? So, Eric, you're saying, have they looked at, at the requirements for other animals and in relationship?
In relationship, absolutely.
I guess we haven't.
Well, one of the things during our site visit, I wanted to know exactly from where the, where the actual kennel would be.
Sure.
Or where the play yard would be, I would say. How far from the actual property line that was from the abutting neighbor?
Okay.
That was interesting for me, because I wanted to know exactly how far enough, and I did read that same section that you already referred to, on that a hundred, a hundred feet. And if I remember correctly, on your, we were at the, at the tree line.
One twenty-six.
One twenty-six. And that was to the retainer wall that's there. So, that was kind of where we were at with that. Kind of met that kind of requirement for me. It was a little bit more than a hundred foot standard for me, but...
And then there's two more. So, I guess the other thing in your statement around, you know, having the stipulation in there that the dogs would have to be inside until eight o'clock in the morning. So, I guess my thought there is that the reason you would do that is because you wouldn't want the dogs barking before eight o'clock in the morning. So, after eight o'clock, I guess, once again, we come back to the noise thing where then we have barking dogs.
Well, it's hard to regulate, the, for me, it's hard to adjust to what the barking value would be there. I'm just thinking that in the past week or so since we had our site visit, I've been down around that neighborhood. There's a lot of activity going on down there right now because of cranberry season and stuff like that. During the off-season, there's noise, noise levels from, you know, hundo and bog operation, what have you. It's hard for me personally to be able to regulate the noise value of the dogs, not knowing if they're going to bark or not. There's already four existing at the house now. Correct me if I'm wrong, without any type of requirements of trying to keep them quiet or what have you. I was just thinking more on a, the closest resident, if they're off to work and they say that they, they're just getting up around six, and you already have a playtime out at seven in the morning, and there isn't, is a noise issue or what have you. I want to kind of curtail that back a little bit. Is it going to fix it all? I won't know until the proof is in the pudding. And this is very difficult for where I stand on how to regulate that noise level. We're talking about some fencing and stuff like that. Whether or not, there was a discussion on a fence along the property line when we were out on site, I do understand from what the applicant's saying that it could be a hardship to them or what have you. I don't think that that's something that is far-fetched. I don't think it's something that couldn't be required to be installed over time, to give the applicant some time to do that. I don't think that's a bad idea at all. Of course, we don't want to hinder, hinder the business either. And if we're trying to be pro-business and try to help an applicant, if it fits, if it works, the noise level is going to be something I think that this board has been struggling with since the applicant should be there. I don't know how to regulate that.
Yeah. And then I guess the last question is a tax rate in Carver. So, if, if they are going to receive more site visits from the dog officer, is that, is that being paid by just the application and what it costs to license dogs in Carver? Because if there are dogs that live in Plymouth that are coming here for the day, then Plymouth is getting the money for those dogs. So, I guess my question is, is there going to be more money that the dog officer will have to spend, taxpayer dollars, to go visit the site once a month for kennels?
Eric asked me this question. I hadn't had the chance to ask the dog officer. So, the question is, if indeed this gets approved, and there's, say, monthly or quarterly monitoring where we want you to visit, is that going to be above and beyond your normal course of business?
Not if we do it in the four hours that we get paid now.
And can you do that within the four hours?
Yeah, I think so.
I didn't have a chance. Okay, yeah.
Is there any, what else that would like to speak?
I have a couple of questions that haven't been answered. I don't think, it's heard that Michelle, that in, it's the N Finistry SBB Cell Water next door. There's still no proof of insurance, which concerns me. Is that going to have to be a condition, that she is going to have to provide liability insurance?
And if that's not, who do we hold liable? Because it's a special permit, where it's not something that is part of the bylaws. Who would then be liable? Do we come back to the board? Do we come back to the town of Carver? Who would be, who would be liable at that point?
Liable for what?
If there is some sort of, like you said, right, there's always the risk where the neighbor's dog, anything, so there's a risk for that. So, who would be liable at that point if they don't obtain the proper insurance?
How does it handle now if somebody's dog?
Well, some insurance companies, some homeowners, we've called our homeowners insurance, and they actually told us that most homeowners would cancel them for doing that and having that on property. And that some dogs, they won't approve as part of homeowners insurance. So, it depends on the dogs that they're going to be having coming in as well. What if all the dogs aren't approved?
What's that, for a kennel? I know we have at least one kennel I know of. What happens if somebody gets bit?
Homeowners' insurance.
A homeowners? Well, say it's a business. That's what you have.
Like Currie Groomer? Like, something like that? If the owner of Currie Groomer gets bit by someone else's dog?
Near Anthony Alonzo's. Country groomer.
Country groomer?
Yeah.
Okay, so are you talking about an outside person getting bit by a dog?
Yes, who walked into...
They'd go after the business. And then the business would either in turn go after the dog owner, or their insurance would have to...
Or they're required by you or the town to have liability insurance.
Not through us. No. So, is that something that the board would possibly require?
Any kind of, I already have two insurance companies that are going to insure me.
I think it's a reason, I think it's a reasonable request.
We have to put that as a condition, and if she didn't have it, if they approved it. If she didn't have it, or it failed, or was revoked, she'd be in violation of the permit.
I think we could require a certificate of insurance, just like a contractor has to issue a certificate of insurance when he's working in town and naming the town as additional insurer. That means the town won't get sued.
Okay.
And make sure that that, annually, that that certificate is submitted.
To the animal control.
To the animal control officer. And she'll look at it within the four hours of the day she has. To keep, to keep on record. Because I think it's a reasonable request.
Okay. And then, we also just had some concerns with, obviously, I think you did address that if the vaccinations and the licensing is kept current, you know, with this moving forward, we did find that they weren't even doing that with their own pets. It's been corrected now for past years and past history, but that's a huge concern. As a business owner, if you weren't even following the laws of your town, how do I know you're going to do it as a business owner? And that's really concerning to us.
I think with the, the requirement that we're going to have in place with the animal control officer, who are doing monthly or quarterly inspections, that ought to curtail that.
Okay.
Because obviously, if not, then the animal control officer's going to notify the planning board. Planning board can start a process trying to rectify that.
You, you saw the amount of work that's going into it out there with the fence and the covering. That's not cheap. And I'm assuming, it is, it's not cheap. And I'm assuming that the kind of investment they're making, it wouldn't be wise for them to let that, those kinds of things slip. Because the board will, if it's approved, the board will have the ability to rescind the permit. So, all of those things, the insurance, the licensing, the vaccinations, all the things that are in place to mitigate your concerns will have to be kept current. It's a big investment to mess around with and, and not do the proper licensing or not. Let that one person come in and leave the dog for four hours and not have the proper things. It wouldn't be in her best interest to do it.
And then as far as she brought up tonight, possibly walking the dogs on the bond, we again have a huge concern with the animals being left alone at any point. I just don't think that's feasible, being that I'm right next door. And like you said, some people for work, I always go to work. I work from home. So, there will be no relief if there is noise for me. I work from home Monday to Friday. So, there is going to be no relief for me if there is a noise factor. And I know, like we said, that's maybe going to be something, if approved, that comes with time. But I will get no relief from it.
Can I ask a question? I already walk the dogs, my, my owners of dogs, and I leave some of my dogs home in their kennels in the house. And are they barking now?
Yeah, but those are...
Let's just stick to, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can monitor when somebody walks their dogs. And you don't want to take them all ten out of the water. So, that was a question I was going to ask, same thing.
I don't know if we can monitor that. I don't know if we have...
What's the question?
Can she walk all ten dogs at once?
No.
Oh, you see, other people who are dog sitters, walking down the street.
Could we, again, put that in the state?
I don't know.
I, I think you can if it keeps her reasonably competitive. This is zoning now, you know.
I know. This is zoning. It's hard to regulate someone's life.
The ACL, what's a reasonable number of dogs to really walk?
If they're that size, maybe two.
You could.
Yeah. Those are pretty good-sized dogs.
We could limit it to she can only walk two dogs at a time?
I don't think that she'd try and walk anything more than that. She's pretty responsible with her own dogs. I couldn't see her walking five. Maybe one or two.
This is new ground.
It's very new ground. It's, it's not zoning at all in some respects. It's like telling a business, they, you know, another type of business that the owners have to behave in a certain way.
Well, you know, I'm thinking this is a crazy analogy, but come on a farm, you don't want to grab two kids in the store at once, for obvious reasons.
Is that by the permit?
No.
Okay, that's the wrong rule. Not a permit. And that's what's trouble about this, is some of the requests are maybe going beyond what we have the right to require as a planning board.
Cannot charge you?
I think if the applicant's agreeing, yeah, and, yeah, no. So, then she's agreed.
Okay.
And is the, I just want to be sure I'm clear, for the maximum number of dogs, is it a maximum of ten dogs on the property, including all their pets? It's no more than that?
That you agreed on?
Yes.
It's not an agreement. It's the hobby kennel.
So, no matter how many dogs are upstairs, not part of the daycare, the maximum number of dogs allowed on the property's kennel? And if we, if there's more than that?
Then it becomes a commercial kennel, and she'd have to come back to them for another permit for a commercial kennel, which is a whole other ball of wax.
And again, I don't know how that's monitored.
I guess not.
Yeah, I, we, she'll know with the laws, and again, the investment she's making, I hope she sticks to the law and not, or whatever. Because I'm not sure how any of that's ever monitored from, from us. Unless when the dog officer makes sure, if it surprises it, and she's got a fowl in there, and then that's a barker. Because if the dog officer would have to...
Schedule a visit, so they're in advance? Or would it be something that may be?
How do you do it? You have to visit.
You could do it either way. I mean, if she's going to be home...
The board of health doesn't tell sometimes. Sometimes they do.
She's going to be home pretty much all day with them. So, I don't think she'd have a problem if one of us stopped by, banged on the door, and just checked things out.
It'll be element of surprise will work here.
I drive down Center Street all the time.
That'd be the good way to do it, too, just so you can check on...
And I'm just, sorry, I'm just asking just to make sure, as a business owner with ten dogs, she should be home all the time with the dogs, not leaving. I just, right.
She's going to leave to walk the dogs.
Right. But I meant like leaving the premises to do whatever, as a business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just had one, just one follow-up. On, on the barking...
Name?
Yeah, sure.
People at home don't know where you are.
Eric Steele, 22 Copperland Lane. So, it sounds like, I know a lot of you guys, it's from what I'm hearing, is about the barking, the sound. So, I guess, have we thought about a plan? So, if it does go forward, what's the plan to figure out if that barking is okay, acceptable, or if it's just out of line? And then, what if it is out of line? Does the permit get rescinded? Have we talked about that? Because that sounds like, if it does go forward and they get the permit, you know, what happens with the, with the noise?
Where do you live?
I live on Copperland Lane.
Are you, are you concerned that you're going to hear them?
No, I'm not.
I'm just curious why you're here all the time. You know, I'm in the butter. I'm just curious.
Yeah. So, no, I'm not in the butter. I live in Carver. And I think that with other things that have happened in Carver, I am all for business. I'm a proponent of business, love small business, looking forward to joining the, hopefully, the Business Development Commission, so I can help bring business to Carver. But I, I'm a strong believer that business belongs in some spots, in some occasions. On this occasion, I would say business belongs in a business-zoned area, not a residentially-zoned area. That's, when it affects neighbors, when it affects any butter, and there's that one, even just a little bit that it could affect them, then I think you get a little bit. So, that, that's why I'm here talking about that.
Eric, are you related to them?
I'm not related to the Degnans, no.
It's, it's a tough...
I do know the Degnans. I do know them, so.
It's a tough situation. And the only way to rectify that is to change the bylaw, unfortunately.
Yeah. It's a, we're a business agricultural town. And, and it's an allowed use by special permit. It's not, it's not a variance. It's on a special permit. If it was, if it was not allowed, it would say prohibited. So, the only way to affect it, I mean, we, we would not look at it. And I was impressed with the mitigation they were offering. It wasn't that, it wasn't just, well, we don't think it's going to be a problem, so we're just going to put up a chain link fence. I mean, the fence has got some very expensive soundproofing fabric on it. And it's as far away, it's not like they fenced their whole yard, and the play area was going to be the entire yard. It's as far away as they could make it reasonably from the butter. So, I, I think the mitigation effort is there. And I do think we, I will offer some, a plan that I think will, will give everybody an opportunity to, to prove themselves. And also prove if, if the noise is going to be a problem. And that plan will have a timeframe on it. And, and then we'll offer it as a condition. And I think it's a, it's a reasonable approach to, to...
And, and then we'll offer it as a condition, and I think it's a, it's a reasonable approach to, to somebody who has the right to have the business. And we just, our job is to mitigate the impacts. Just with the same thing with the solar thing, that right was there, and our job was to mitigate the impacts. Our butters brought up impacts, and this board did the best they could to mitigate them. And it may not have pleased the, anybody in the neighborhood, but that's what the job was, I think that's what our job is here. And if we can, I will offer a plan to, to check what you said.
I want to just add to Eric's last piece, if they found this in violation, they would have to, they would conduct another hearing to consider rescinding.
Got it. Are you?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, it's Eric, 27th Ave. I, my dog has been in Stephanie's care for years. I've been lucky enough to have her with Stephanie. And regarding vaccinations and license, she has always been very on top of me to make sure that she has all of those current information for her and making sure that she knows my dog is vaccinated, actually, getting ahead of it a month ahead of time to let me know. So when my dog's been in her professional care, it's something that she's definitely made know about. I think that there's a lot of obstacles that you guys have all worked together to come over, and I think that she's done a good job of coming through some of those. So I just wanted to provide that little bit of insight.
Thank you. Thank you. Is anyone else? Seeing no one else. Do we have to close the hearing to the public and make a motion to close the public hearing? My second motion. We have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. Here's the brother who's on there, don't think it should be closed.
I don't have a problem with being closed, but I'd like to put some conditions.
We're just going to. So we have a motion and a second, those in favor? Those, yeah, okay. Now, I was just going to say that I lived for many years with a barking dog next, next to my house. I loved dogs, I didn't like the barking dog. And now, that dog is gone now. Of course, I've lived here since 1970. No, no, I had nothing to do with it.
Really?
But, well, they only lasted many years, you know. I've been here for forty years, I don't know any dog that's lived for forty years. But, but we have people in the neighborhood now that have dogs, and, you know, they're, they're very good about it. And I, and I don't, don't hear them barking, and, but it's a concern, the noise is definitely a concern to me. So I think the members of the board, I think we were thinking about doing some sort of probationary period if this did go through. Mr. Chair, I have a recommendation, and Jack, it's a question. We have another public hearing, could we do the conditions after the next public hearing? And so, because they're going to take a while to discuss, I think? So go to the, to the next public hearing.
Next meeting.
We can do it at the next meeting. We've closed it, we can do the conditions.
We have sixty-five days, not ninety days to make a decision.
I wouldn't mind doing the conditions tonight, but I think it's going to take a little bit of time. And, and I think that there are people here for the other public hearing, which I think is going to move.
Hopefully quickly.
And so what I'm thinking is that, I'd like to move on, I'd like to move on to the next public hearing and come back to the conditions. Or go to the next meeting, it's up to the rest of the board, but I'd like, do we need a vote on that?
I, I will tell the board, I have to go up to the selectmen's meeting eventually here, and we're cutting that, we're running out of time.
So then we can do the conditions in the next meeting.
Do we have to vote?
It's up to you.
So let's, do we vote to continue?
It's not, it's not your public hearing's vote.
We can just do the conditions when we want.
Just instruct me to put it on the agenda for the next meeting if you so wish, or you could vote now after the hearing. Let's get through the next hearing and see what we have.
Ed has a good, good value to what his discussion is. I think that we should really take some time, the board members should think about the conditions that they want, and bring that to the next meeting. Just going through conditions right now and trying to kind of put in criteria might be a little bit rushed.
Why don't we schedule it for the next meeting?
I'm going to offer that Ed and I can work on a draft decision for you guys, and Stephanie and the butters to, to.
To look at before the next meeting.
Would it be inappropriate to, to tell them what we're thinking? I'd like both the butter and the applicant.
I have a list of things as well, but yeah.
Is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
My thought is that we would.
Two seconds.
Huh? Two seconds? Put probationary period on this, and, and that, at the end of the probationary period, which right now is between six months and a year, we'd have a chance to have, come back in to this board, and this board would review the performance of the applicant, everything that she has said. I'd also like to add to that, that if, if, I don't know how these guys are going to vote yet, but this is what I'm thinking, and I talked to Jack about this today, that the permit would go with the owner and not with the property. Which is normally, it's a little different normally. That way, if the owner decided to sell the property, the business would not, the permit to run that business would not go with the property, it would go with the owner. So that's basically the, the main conditions, and there were a lot of other little conditions, but I think it needs to be discussed amongst the board, but I want them to know that, because if we're going to, that's what we'll be coming back with in two weeks.
Everything else was discussed, I have here, hours of operation, vaccinations, monitoring, number of dogs, fencing, no overnight, no ble, no grooming, that kind of stuff.
Might I suggest that during you guys' drafting this, we have a representative from animal control there to get input from you guys, make sure that we're not going to put a hardship on you guys with anything that we're going to require, that would be greatly appreciated.
So I can come in, whatever their hours are, I can come in.
The four hours.
Yeah. I don't know if it's every day.
Twelve, four.
Noon to four, every day, seven days a week.
There you go, man.
Okay.
We're working out.
Okay.
So you're going to come up with something, and then you're going to notify the neighbors?
I'll share it with the applicant and the Degmans.
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 And then we'll, we'll finalize and take a vote on the application in two weeks?
Okay.
So we're not, we're not voting tonight.
But, sorry, when's the next meeting? Two weeks.
Well, not exactly.
Okay, sorry.
Well, there's two weeks is election, and I'm going to ask them to meet on November 7th, but I haven't asked them yet.
Jack won't be here.
Well, I need four of you.
Okay. Let's, let's do it after the meeting tonight.
Do you want to vote tonight?
Let's move on to the next one and get it done. I don't think we can say that, but this is a public, this isn't about. Okay, we're going to go to the public hearing for the Post Road Operations, it's a continuance, Post Road Operations LLC permit extension.
I, I'm going to be very quick here. We've been through this, and 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 I think we're there. I've gotten positive emails from the board, from the applicant, from the residents, from the lawyers. I drafted the decision, and this has been approved, or not approved, but okayed, if you will, for lack of a better word. You've seen this mostly, I did add a couple things on here. I did number four, the development must adhere to the original site plan as approved on June 2nd, 2003, and the final modification of October 16th, 2008. Number 11 is the condition that ties it into the deed restriction. Keep, you keep going.
These numbers are different.
No, they're not. There, you're in the right section, the condition section.
Number four. Okay. So number 11.
Yeah, I got it. Now, I put in most of these. I mean, everything else you've seen.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven about the surety, the, you will release the existing performance bond upon receipt of a new one for $7,500. And then the phasing on 34. They were some of the outstanding ones, though they kept getting whittled down to them. I think they're ready.
Jack, can I ask one question? You mentioned 2003 in the current site plan, what if there's a conflict between the modification?
The modification always, always, yes.
The modification says 2003.
Well, that would be the final rule. As long as it doesn't leave them.
Right now? And finally?
All right, this is a public hearing, does anybody else have anything?
Is he asked to speak?
How long, how long have you been on?
I've never been asked to speak. Fifteen minutes. If you.
I'm sorry, John.
I interrupt, John?
Of course.
If you decide to do Stephanie's, please write every, someone write every condition down so I can draft it, if you decide to do that.
After the seventh, what will the hearing be after the seventh?
It will be the twentieth.
Twentieth of November.
And one quick thing before you go, on 27th about the surety bond, can I make the recommendation for cash? Just that I realize that it's up to the treasurer, but.
Just write that down somewhere.
That was the intention.
Also.
Don't worry, there's help. It's a CD, but what's the difference?
Okay? I apologize.
All right, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing no one. Let's hear a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. And you're taking the record, okay, good.
We're going to put a condition on here, are we going to put any conditions on this? Just so I think the recommendation for the cash, but like.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the, just lost train of thought. Prove the application in front of us for Post Road Operations LLC, Pine Ridge Way, with all the conditions that are specified with the cash surety of $7,500. That was in your package.
That's, that's in this package anyway.
It's a whole package that was negotiated, and all those conditions. That's my motion.
Second.
Have motion and a second, those in favor? Those in session?
Discussion. Discussion. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody here that worked on this project, it's been a long time. I'd like to thank the homeowners for all your help and guidance that you've given us, it's been greatly appreciated. I've got to say thank you to John, I know that being you, but it, pretty good heads on the money. And I do appreciate a very good, frank, long discussion on where, where we come to an agreement. And I do appreciate your efforts on trying to move this, this forward, so it took a lot for me and a lot for you, and I do want to recognize that I do appreciate that. So, to everybody concerned, I really appreciate your efforts, because it did help us get to this point. Thank you.
Who else, Mr. Chair? Anybody else?
No, just to thank John and the homeowners for all their hard work to get to where we're at.
After many site visits and many planning board meetings, I'm glad that, hopefully, everybody's happy this time. I said that once before at another meeting, and it, and then things changed, but I guess finally we've come to a, an agreement. I'm happy to see this go on, and hopefully we build some more buildings out there.
Structure building.
Yeah, and, and, and that'll be finalized, then you won't have to live through any more construction. All right. We need to vote, Johnny. Yeah. Yeah. So, do you have a motion to, yeah, we have a motion and a second, those in favor? Aye. No, that's unanimous.
Good luck.
Good night.
I want to say one thing before we break, is that, you know, I do appreciate the kind words and the playing words out of me, and the homeowners and I have worked hard together and built a nice relationship, but also, it was a three, a three-way effort, and everybody had a chance to put a piece of this together, and it was a nice way to kind of resurrect something that I'm struggling in. And I think all of us together appreciate everybody's efforts.
Yes, very much so, and I think all our benefits. Your guidance and your leadership has been very helpful for us, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Have a good debate.
Yes.
Let's, all right. Well, that's the next meeting, it would be.
We can have them all done.
You want to, you want to vote on the special permit, stop it for the conditions, but we have to discuss it. Are we in recess?
No, 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 no.
Get to the bathroom.
Yeah, well, okay. I'm not going to be here in a second, so. They said vote and.
Well, if you came, if you worked with Jack, and came up with a list, and.
It just means that I won't be here to vote, and they need four votes.
Right. So we have four votes.
So that's putting them on for advantage. I have no idea how you guys are going to vote, but.
Well, the other thing is, is we could come up with a list and, and do it at the next meeting.
The next meeting will be the 20th of November.
Yeah.
Do you want to get started before then? Well, there's an appeal period, you know, there's a 21-day appeal period, when the, when the decision, if, if the decision is in your favor, it gets signed and submitted to the town clerk, and there's a 21-day period where anybody who feels aggrieved, any butter who feels aggrieved by the decision can appeal. You can't do anything until the 21 days is up. So, that would mean, if we voted on tonight, and somewhere between, we get the conditions done and signed, we get them to sign them, it would be somewhere in mid-November when the 21 days would be up. You wait until the 20th, it will be mid-December.
Yeah, if, if we could.
It's up to the board members, you want. If you, it's up to the board, if they want to, if they want to try to do it tonight, fine, if they want it, Jack and I to work it out, that means on the 7th, I won't be here to vote.
He won't be here to vote.
It means you're going to need all, you're going to need four positive votes to, to get the permit.
I would like to try to do it tonight, if we could.
It's up to the board, though, what do you want to do?
She's the applicant.
Hmm?
She's the applicant. You know, we, it's our job to do our jobs, so.
Well, Jack's already got all the conditions written down about the insurance and the license and everything. You heard what I was going to offer, that, that there'd be a trial period for, well, the initial thought was six months, and I think this board should vote on whether it be six months or a year. I thought it should be a year because of the investment that's being made.
For a discussion, if we're going to get into it. How does the trial people, period work? In your mind, you're, you're talking about a trial period after the six months, or a one-year trial period, then the permits revoked?
No, no, if there's, if there's a, if there's a problem in the planning board hears, hears from any butters out there, and needs to be in a butter, the same butters that would be noticed by a special permit mailing, that, that, that it's too much noise, or the other conditions aren't being met, then we'll bring the applicant back in, and we'll have the right to rescind the, rescind the permit.
We can do that now.
No, it has to go to the building, unless we make it a condition. Now, if we make it a condition, though, going to Jack, we can do it.
Right.
But I think it's, I don't think it's fair to do with.
I guess my concern is this, on that end of it, is that if we do something that you're, you're phrasing as a trial period, and me as a business owner, not speaking for the applicant, invest, say, $10,000 into this project, and after six months, we're going to revoke that, I mean, all businesses have a.
Trial period.
Risk anyways, of investment anyways. Of investment anyways. I just don't know. My concern is the le, not the legality on it, 'cause I know we have the right to do that, but are we going to set a precedence on, on that end of it? And I'm not sure on that. I'm having a problem with the trial.
According to lawyers, the only people that set precedence are courts. So I think, I think, what I'm saying is to be fair to the, I don't think it would be fair to the butters to approve it with no and then if they complain, we say, well, jeez, they made a ten thousand dollar investment, we're not gonna go back on it.
No, I'm not saying that, but if there is a complaint, legitimate complaint from an butter, that, that, and it could be, you know, whatever it is.
It's probably too much noise.
Too much noise. You know, they bring the complaint to us, and we can address it.
Right, so we can make it a year. They'll have, they'll have a chance to hear the complaint and, and make some changes to their make some changes to their situation to try to mitigate it.
And what if, what if that mitigation can't happen? Can we just take action to revoke the permit?
That's, then, then that's the board's decision, yeah. And so it's, and I think if the applicant goes forward knowing that in the first year, it's our decision whether the, whether the permit be revoked based on evidence that was submitted.
The only difference that we're doing by doing what Ed's saying is giving the board the authorization to do that other than the, the enforcement officer, which is the building inspector. That's the only thing that's changing. Okay?
But, yeah.
Just to be clear.
Right, and, and, but Jack also said that we would be able to do it in a public meeting as opposed to a public hearing.
Yep.
And if you have the building inspector rescind it, it needs to be a public hearing. So it would be, we would, we have all the conditions. Jack's already got them written down. You heard everything. The insurance, the backs, everything. The inspections quarterly by the unannounced by the dog, animal control officer, and that they would have a year to, to prove that they could do it correctly. Any complaints would come to us, not the building inspector. And we would hear those complaints. We would bring them in, ask them to address them. And then at the end of the year, if the complaint is still there and they haven't been addressed them, they would know that we had the right to rescind it without going through a public hearing.
And what's your thoughts on that condition?
I can totally prove that I can keep everybody quiet and everybody's happy, so I'm totally...
So you're not a problem with it?
I don't have a problem with it.
That settles that discussion.
We need to make sure that they're happy that the dogs are quiet, 'cause they're the ones that are most affected.
That makes perfect sense.
And, and, you know, I, I don't want it to be a one complaint thing. I want it, I wanna see a pattern. And that's why if there's a complaint, we'd have you both in here. We would find out what the complaint is specifically, and we would ask you to address it. That would give you some time to address it. We would give you some conditions, get it, get it done by a certain amount of time. Or, you know, if it was that you were, you know, they found out you were gone, there were ten bark dogs in the back, and we and, and you'd need to know that without a public hearing, we could rescind that. And that, that sort of says to you guys, you know, it's, it's putting, everything you've told us that your professionalism is gonna, is gonna make this work. We're putting it on you. And all the things you showed us in the field, that, that's a fairly sizable investment from what I saw, that we, we could just pull it.
The only other concern that I had, now that I think my word, done with that, and I don't wanna speak for you. The only other thing that I had for a concern is that out at the site, there was a discussion on that privacy fence on the property line. You said that it would be a hardship or anything. I would like to amend, to ask that to be something that would be installed within a two-year period. So that way, it's not a financial hardship. It's something that's, that can take place.
If it may, if the butters feel it's necessary.
I think if you can be selective about the dogs that you're gonna allow to come into the program, which she did state, you, I don't think that putting up fences is as much of a hardship as she's stating. If you're kinda gonna be able to be selective about the animals that you can bring into your facility, age and size, some of our size concerns, then realistically, that allows you the flexibility to pick and choose what animals you're bringing.
Right, very good.
And the last part of the, the condition would be that the permit goes with you and not with the property, which is a little unusual, but Jack said it's legal. So you can't get the permit and decide you don't wanna do it and say, well, we're gonna sell it. We're gonna sell the house and the, and the business with the permit. If you, if you leave the property, you sell, it's foreclosed, whatever, anything happens, the permit is rescinded, 'cause it goes with you. So you have to be living there. And you have to be living there to, to have that permit. Do you agree to that?
Absolutely.
Is this?
Ah, there's no more, unfortunately, the public hearing is closed. We're only asking the butters in the...
Is this, is this something that you feel you can live with? Hello? Is this something that you feel that you can live, you could live with?
Well, they're not selling, not that the business has to be.
Only is that.
Only is that, yeah.
And, and the other conditions that we're going forward with?
I'm sorry, and just to go back to the fence, you're saying the fence needs to be installed within two years?
No, it was a discussion, and the input that I got from you was that on the information that the applicant was providing to us is that the size of the dogs and curtail it to the noise and stuff like that, you didn't think it was necessary.
No, sorry, I meant that it wasn't a hardship on them, because they're getting that type of money that they should do.
Do you think it's necessary?
Yes. You would like to see that? Okay.
And I also would ask that if any communications or complaints that it can be filed, can they be shared through the board? And I don't want it emailed privately by the resident. Is that a communication, that all communications comes through the board? I don't want any...
That's how it should be anyway.
I don't want any kind of communication.
The only communication we should get is from you.
Right.
Off of the dog officer, the animal control. You've gotta complain.
And we'll get a written form.
And we need it written.
I just wanna, if I'm actually making a file or filing a complaint or concern or statement, I don't want to get a private email from the resident back in regards to it.
No, it should, it should go...
Do you understand that?
Yep.
You agree to that?
Okay, I don't work the fence, but, anyway.
Can I ask a question? Sorry. How do I know that if they did file a complaint, it was merited?
It would what?
It would be merited, like say if they would just...
That's gonna be, that's gonna be up to us and the dog and the animal control officer. I think the first thing we do is have the animal control officer investigate the complaint.
And you have also just a concern with that, though. If I am calling the dog officer, they, they stated that their hours of operations is only twelve to four. So if I do have a legitimate concern from before that time, who would I contact at that point?
I guess the selectment office.
You could act, if it was in the middle of the night or in the afternoon, well, middle of the night, it won't happen.
During the day, just a...
During the day. You, the normal process is if you call the police department because you had an animal control issue, they could call the animal control officer and dispatch.
Okay. I think this...
Yeah, okay, I, I wasn't...
I think there's gonna have to be some discretion used here if there are dogs barking at night and you call the police. They're not gonna get the animal control officer out, and she does have more dogs than her own.
They're not gonna be working at the night.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They're not, they're not gonna go out. And they do have their own dogs, so unless we record the voice of their dogs, you know, we're not gonna know. So I think that, I, I'm hoping that my feeling about this, since the sidewalk is, you have very legitimate complaints. And, and I took them very seriously. But I also feel as though they have the right to prove themselves. And I'd like to give them that right personally. I don't know how the rest of the board feels yet, but I'd like to give them that right. And, and we'll put a test period on it and see how it goes. And this test period's gonna be very constant to them if, if they make that investment and it turns out that they're not keeping to the conditions or, or it is a huge noise factor. And, 'cause they'll, we will have that right to do that without a public hearing.
So the only thing that I don't have clear from the board is the, the original fence.
Yeah, but how do you feel about the, the fence? Would you be willing to install a fence along the property line after, say, like a two-year period?
Only if it is absolutely necessary, but I don't believe it will be.
I, I agree on the fence. I do. As a, as her husband, I agree on the fence. It was, it was a plan anyway. It was a plan anyway. Do you agree to put it in within two years?
With, yeah.
Within reasonable time.
Would you want it after two years or within the two years?
Well, within a two-year period.
Within a two-year period.
If they decide next spring to put it in, they can. But within a two-year period, I think it was enough leniency within that, that timeframe to have it installed, and it wouldn't be a financial hardship per se.
Or if there's a merited complaint about something that the fence would mitigate?
Well, I'm thinking that if there was, that's, that was my, my thoughts. You know, where it was discussed on the site, site visit, I think it had merit, so I wouldn't wanna be home later on with them when they're discussing the fence, but that's okay.
You guys got anything more?
No.
Sorry, the only other thing that, that part of it was just about the dogs not being outside before eight?
That's already part of it.
I just didn't know.
Is it okay if I let my dogs go outside to go to the bathroom before eight, 'cause we get up there?
Oh, you do it now?
Yeah, every day.
Yeah, I would say it would be, I would say it would be dogs that you bring in for business.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Just one, what time are you open till?
Um, right now, it's, it's, that's just it. It's gonna vary. You know, I, I, we have talked about...
The latest is six o'clock.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to cut that back.
Six o'clock?
Yeah, I wanna be a little earlier.
So your hours of operation are gonna be what?
Six to six.
Six to six.
But no dogs, other than your own, out before eight P.M., eight A.M.?
Correct.
Okay, no more than two dogs being locked at once.
Right.
And that, that's how it's scheduled, based on area dog behaviors. Okay.
I know we had, on the site visit, we discussed the depth of the chain link fence to go on the grounds so the dogs can't dig under it. What, what were your thoughts on that? How did you?
I personally, I personally wanted to put, just for my own sanity, and I know that...
Well, I would have to buy an eight-foot fence, like eight-foot chain link, six feet exposed. At least above the ground. If more, then let it be more.
What did we decide was the height of the ground? Six feet.
You know, if it's more than six feet, you have to get a building permit.
So it'll be a little higher than six feet.
Six, a minimum of six feet above the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
If it's more than six feet above the ground, they have to get a building permit.
Right, that, it wouldn't be higher than six feet above the ground.
Well, they have to get a building permit.
If it's more than six feet above the ground, they do, yeah.
Anything else?
And just with that fence, the, that mesh netting goes all the way to the top from the ground all the way to the top.
Is this already being run as a business? I'm a little bit confused. I heard conflicting statements this evening. Is it already moving forward as a business?
Yeah, the public hearing's actually already closed.
I don't fully, so it shouldn't be.
Okay. I got that impression, sorry.
We should be the ones asking questions.
Okay, yeah, right. So do we have all the conditions down? Everybody?
Jack and I are gonna work on them.
Ten dogs, you got that right.
Yeah, Jack's got them all written down. The only thing we added with the, the trial period, the, the fence within two years, and we'll describe the length and the, it only should be really from the back of their house to the, so doesn't need to be all the way up to the street.
What about the insurance? What, what did you...
They're gonna provide liability insurance certificates to the dog officer, show them they have liability and that it's not homeowners. And if it is homeowners, you have to show us that, that the homeowner's insurance will, will cover this. Okay, we need proof that you have liability insurance. And vaccinations and, and all of that. And that the other thing will be that the permit goes with the applicant, not the property.
Good. So what's your motion?
The motion? I make a motion to, to approve the permit with the conditions we just stated. And all the conditions Jack had on, we just talked about.
But I kinda need all of them.
What?
I need them all stated.
You'll get them.
Okay.
You'll get them. Jack and I will work on it right away, and you'll get it before you do the, unless you're gonna go home and do the minutes tonight. So I've made a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second.
To approve, or to addition.
To approve the dog daycare with the conditions stated. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Those abstaining? Okay, so we have four to one.
So passes.
The passes. We're gonna get the conditions written, and what we'll do is we'll show both of you the conditions to make sure you agree that that's what we talked about.
Thank you, everybody.
And I will sign them before the next meeting. We may all get to sign them before the next meeting, but Jack will, you know.
But they'll be reviewed by the butters and written by all of us, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he had to, he had to have that just approved. All right, we're gonna, so we've got you wanna?
Planning board notes?
Planning board notes. Does anybody have any planning board notes?
It's in here.
I do.
Thank you.
Planning, us as members.
It's supposed to be F, and there's nothing in F.
Well, I, I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to just thank everybody who participated in Kayla's speech this past weekend at the Jordan Hospital. It was a great event. This year was a very large crowd. And it really never ceases to amaze me, the community in which we live in and we take part of in the area community. So the support that they do for the local fundraising. For me, it, it said a lot for me this, this past year. And I do appreciate everybody who participated, everybody who donated, and whoever, you know, it was a beautiful day to boot. So I wanna thank everybody for their participation. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
Most of them, thank you.
Zoe? All right, planning notes, the planners are here.
I have, I have a couple of things that we had, we, we have...
Oh, okay, okay.
We need to set a public hearing for November seventh. And that's for our things for Tommy, and also for the solar bylaw. We have to set that public hearing date. So Jack wanted us to do that, so...
So you're scheduling?
So, so, okay.
Have a motion?
In a second.
In a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
I'm a little confused.
That's okay. We just said so that we could have the public hearing for all of our articles for Tommy. But it's mostly for the solar bylaw.
That would be a motion.
Okay. And second, okay, that was unanimous. Anything else? Was that, that was your?
I think that's all.
Okay. The approval of minutes of our show the second, two thousand and twelve.
On the second page, Mr. John Deli Piscoli, not Piscola, at the very top. Let's get his name correct.
Such a hard name.
Right there.
D E L L I, D I R I S C O L I.
Okay. Make that correction?
Yes.
And what is giving Wade Street back to the town? Town owns Wade Street, doesn't it?
Well, they don't.
The whole street you talking about?
No, it's Wade Street Project, it's household property.
So let's, don't you think we should?
Explain it.
Clarify that?
Thank you.
You can expl, you can clarify it to the Wade Street property owned by the redevelopment authority.
Okay. You got that?
Yep.
Any other corrections?
Move we approve as, as revised?
Second.
Motion in the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents, obviously Mr. Hunter goes with the correspondence. There's nothing in there.
Move your turn?
We, we have another, we have to have another meeting, right? When's our next meeting? I don't know.
That's it. It's supposed to be the, ah, the Tuesday of voting.
Right.
So Jack says, he's gotta find out if we can change it. Do we have to vote on it?
We have to vote on that. So he had recommended the seventh for our meeting, November seventh, because we, the, are scheduled...
What day is that?
It's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday.
Isn't the conservation commission that case?
If you're on Thursday, I can be here.
I can have my dates written down. He's looking for the 7th because of Washington Day.
Did he say how do you get that approved first, though?
We need to...
Yeah, to vote on that.
We need to vote on it. So I'd say a motion for the Senate.
Next planning board meeting? Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Most of you are joined now.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Friend and friend, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.